To ask everybody to please stand and observe a moment of prayer. Thank you. This time I'd like to ask the city clerk, she'll please call the roll.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Blackwell?
Here.
Joyner?
Here.
TJ Walker? TJ Walker? Beltrich?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Javaris Walker?
Okay, we have a call. At this time, I'd like to ask that item number four, consideration of the minutes of the regularly scheduled city council meeting, which was held July 10th of 2023, looking for a motion to approve the minutes. Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Harris made the second. Any need for discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, the minutes have been approved. At this point in time, I'd like to ask if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda that anybody would like to make. Hearing none, we'll move on. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our city manager, Keith Rogers, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few updates for the community this evening. On Friday, December 1st, at 6:00 PM, we will have our city lake lighting. We'll have carriage rides, food trucks, free hot cocoa, and inflatables for the children. Parking for this event will be available at Lakeside Church and at Chico's. On Sunday, December 3rd, we will be having our annual Christmas parade, and there will also be a food truck rodeo at Station Square near the end of the parade route. And the parade begins at 3:00 PM. On December 7th, we have Elf the Musical that will be at the Imperial Center, and we will also have a show on December 10th for Elf the Musical. And then finally, on Sunday, December 10th, at 1:00 PM at the Imperial Center, we will have our winter wonderland, where there will be a visit from Santa, an interactive holiday show, as well as arts and crafts for all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions for our manager on his report? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number eight, which petitions to be received from the public. The public petitions portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for the public comment, and the city council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. City council values all citizen input. This is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that sign-in sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. If an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your statements are in regard to an item that is subject to a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak, time will also be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. The city council requests that you please adhere to the following guidelines. Complete a sign-in sheet. Address comments to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you will be asked to sit down or removed from the meeting. Please keep comments to three minutes. This time, I'd like to invite Richard Petway to the podium.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Richard Petway. I reside at 400 East Thomas Street, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. And I'm here to speak on the city workers, sanitation workers. Some people will have you to believe that this is a political thing. They want, they would like for you to, for you to believe that this is all about them. But it's not. If what it is, this is about a fair wages. It is about you coming to the table and listen to what the city workers have to say. Some people think, would say that because you gave, give the city workers a raise, that the taxes gonna go up. Well, maybe so. But did the taxes go up when the city manager's got $75,000 or his way? Did the taxes go up when the fire department, water and sewage, either electric department get a raise? What is so different about the sanitation workers who get out here and pick up the same trash that they got raises for? What is so difficult about giving them a raise? I'll say this. If your heart has been hardened because of this, then search it out. And let God be in it. But because God is not in your heart, it no matter what we gonna say, you still not gonna get it. But I tell you this, one day, you gonna have to count for it. One day, we all gonna have to count for what we done wrong. What we done wrong here today, we can fix it. We can give the city sanitation workers a raise. All they asking for is 15% raise and a 6% cost of living raise. And who don't need a cost of living raise at this day and time? Social Security Department, they giving their people, they giving them a raise. All the, all the workers out here that are getting a raise are getting a raise. But the sanitation department can't, because your heart has been hardened. Look, take a look in the mirror. And Master Jackson said, "Look in the mirror." And if you see yourself in that mirror, that see yourself years ago, that didn't get a raise, forgot one now, because you at the top, remember, the same thing that carries at the top can bring you down. And let this not be known, that the city of Rocky Mountain wouldn't get a employee's a raise.
Thank you, Mr. Petway. I apologize, I skipped the order of presentations and recognitions, I will do that after the public comment. At this time, I'd like to ask or invite Mumad Shaikh to the podium.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. Those of you who oppose the city employees' demand for a meager wage increase, you have successfully launched a settler colonialist project of power and domination aimed at denying the working poor, the human right to a better standard of living through a living wage. By kicking them to the curb, you have successfully perpetrated bigotry and racism, both still flourishing in Jim Crow South. Now tell us why you're punishing this group that's helpless and lack resources to, to fight back. We have had drips and drabs from you about first, lack of funds and fiscal responsibility, and the third, market-driven forces. All three not applied to the spectacularly huge wage increases of 36% and 27% for the police and first responders respectively, but vigorously applied to crushing the working-class demand for a punitive wage increase of 15%. That's how little you value the backbreaking job of removing trash, tree limbs, heavy furniture, dead animals, unclogging drains to keep roads, lanes, and neighborhoods uncluttered, safe, and free for the police, the first responders, and the citizens to get to their destination safely and speedily. How's that not of value to you? What's stopping you from voting yes to the please for a wage increase? Is that, is it the bad blood that exists between you and a council member who staunchly supports the city workers? This deep disdain for him was on full display at the end of the last city council meeting, and that must have given you a much-needed boost to flaunt your power further. Ladies and gentlemen, the hostility between these two groups on the council have provided a catalyst for the collective punishment of a group supported by the much-maligned council member. This is abuse of absolute power, the power to place the knee of, their knee on the neck of the employees because they hate the person who supports them. If the worker, if the wrath of power can descend on city employees today, it can descend on all of you tomorrow. The target member is doing the right thing and will continue to support the city employees' call for a wage increase. So how are you going to, to stop waging this war against him and benefit the needers in our city with a pay increase? Let us all push back against the arrogance of consolidated power and against injustices against the lowest-paid and overworked employees. Respect that call for a wage increase. Remember, they were given a raise of only 183 this year.
Thank you, Ms. Shaikh. This time, I'd like to invite Dr. Koo to the podium.
May I have a question?
Yes, sir, what's your question?
Again, notice is that the meeting is not being live-screened at this time for the public. Can someone answer that, staff person?
Is there a reason?
No, we're, we're looking to that.
We should pause for a minute.
So we having technical difficulties?
Far as I know.
Okay, 'cause I think some thinking is a reason that they don't want the public comments to be aired and be shared with the citizens of Rocky Mountain.
Dr. Knight, Councilman Knight, I don't, we don't know that's true. I certainly don't hold that belief, and so I'm asking that we suspend and find an answer.
Thank you.
Is it working now? I've been told it's working now.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to invite Dr. Koo to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At the last council meeting, two weeks ago, a petitioner quoted the national averages of pay for the sanitation workers in the United States. He said that the national average is $17 an hour. For New York City, it was 17.67 an hour, Miami 14.31, and the average for the state of North Carolina is $13. Since the sanitation workers here in Rocky Mountain are getting 17.67 an hour, our workers are making more than those quoted. Thus, we should be satisfied with this paltry sum. Let me quote you some other national averages. The CEO of Blackstone makes $253 million last year. The CEO of Google made $225 million last year, and Hertz made $182 million a year. I don't think I need to go through any, anymore, do I? Even Apple, Tim Cook takes home a cool $99 million a year. I do not care what work you do, it doesn't deserve a million a year, much less hundreds of millions. Such obscene sums are stolen from our workers, and to top that, they pay, they pay few taxes. Meanwhile, we are told to be satisfied with whatever crumbs are thrown to us. Why don't you tell the CEOs to be satisfied with $17.67 an hour? The $60,000 beginning pay for the newly hired policeman comes out to about $28 an hour for a 40-hour week. And why is the work more valuable than that of a sanitation worker? $17.67 an hour comes out to about $36,000 to $37,000 a year, and this is supposed to cover all the social services that have been taken away from us by a fiscally irresponsible federal and state government, like health insurance, school tuition, food, fuel, mortgage, or rent, and incidentals. Most folks had to borrow from their credit cards to even pay it past by day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year. And these debt interests accumulated exponentially because people can only pay the monthly required minimum, and attested nationally by the trillion-dollar student debt alone. Workers can accept lower pay if they do not carry the burden of previously covered social services. If you say our wages are so good, why did the auto workers, the teachers, the healthcare workers, the Starbucks workers, Amazon workers, UPS drivers go on strike to get pay increases and other benefits like better working conditions? I'm appalled by the so-called community leaders and leaders of faith telling the workers it is okay to stay at the bottom or join the race to the bottom, while expecting the congregation to fork out money at every service. And even more shame to the elected officials who are supposed to represent the interests of those who elected them. It is going to be a real bah humbug Christmas this year. And by the way, the North Carolina General Assembly just okayed $30 million to help a private jet company
Thank you, Dr. Koo, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Cooper Blackwell to the podium.
Okay, I'm standing here today, again, on behalf of the NAACP to request for the city council to approve a 15% increase with 6% yearly cost of living increase, yearly cost of living for the sanitation workers. So, you know, we stood, we've been here since July, week after week. Today, we had a press conference to discuss some of the issues that we've kind of uncovered since seeing the data ourselves. And there is, there are tons of workers that are in the sanitation department that are making barely $36,000 a year. Not, not considering, you know, their family obligations and what other, what other obligations they may have. But, you know, what we're hearing is that people don't have the money they need to support their families. So that's what we're asking for. We're asking for you all to agree to enable the people that are keeping our streets clean to support their families, so they can keep doing it. It's very simple to us. It was simple to you when you all made the raise for $60,000 for the police department and the increase for, for the fire department. So we're just asking for the same thing for the sanitation workers. What's interesting is that the data shows that people that have been here for 27 years, 25 years, 26 years, 17 years, have not seen any type of substantial increase, not just in their salary, but in their position. They, there are people that have been here for 17 years that are still sanitation equipment operator one, making $42,000 a year. You try working for 25 years, supporting your family off of, you know, $40,000, you know? And actually, a lot of the raises that you all have said have been given came in 2022, when city, when city manager Rochelle Smalltoni was here, and she started to make way to make a more equitable pay system for the people that are coming in. But it's not finished, the work is not done. So you all have a job to do, and we need you all to, to get on it, complete the, complete the task, and show how equitable our city can be. We can lead the way in paying for, our, paying for good work for citizens of Rocky Mountain. We can lead the way nationally, across the country. Let's be the one that they model after us about how to serve our people, how to serve the community, how to, how to reward people with fair compensation for what they do every day. Let's be the ones to, to be the example for the rest of the nation. Let's stay true to our resolution when we passed, when we took down the Confederate monument and spent $25,000 painting the end racism mural and, you know, getting our award with Robert Wood Johnson Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell.
Thanks for letting me use my time.
I would like to invite Crystal Weems Anderson to the podium.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Crystal Weems Anderson, I'm at 316 Sloth Road in Ward 3. I know I wrote something, but I'm actually not even gonna read it. But this is basically to the community. Many times that we come down here, we have city council meetings on, two times out of the month, and every time, we hear the same issues that are being addressed. So I want the community to start realizing that we keep coming down here, and the issues are not being addressed that you have an issue with. So what are we doing as a community when we leave here? Are we getting together and having these conversations and breaking things down? So I'm asking the community to start having those meetings. You have neighborhood associations, you have your councilmen, you have ward meetings. Start sitting down and actually being strategic about what you really want and what you're really asking for. That way, when you present it, everyone understands and everyone knows where we're trying to go at. Because the more and more people come down here, I think the more and more they get tired of hearing us talk. Seriously. We talk and we talk, and you keep coming back and saying nothing's happening. But what are we doing as a community? What are we doing together? What are we doing outside? Because most of the times when we leave here, we're bickering, we're arguing, we're not even talking to one another because I don't want to talk to this person, or I'm not talking to this person because I don't understand their views, or I don't like their views, or they disagree with me. But we have to agree to disagree, and we have to find solutions, like real solutions, outside of these chambers. We don't live in the chambers, we live in the community. So I'm asking the community to start working together and actually seek things that we can do to actually break down and find the real issues that we're having. Because we can talk about sanitation workers, we can talk about the police department, but let's talk about the real issues that are creating the things. Where's our development? Where are things for our youth? Where's our education system? Let's start thinking about other things outside of that to help the issues. Because keep talking about it, we ain't getting nowhere. We ain't getting nowhere. But if we leave these chambers and actually sit down at the table with everyone at the table, maybe we can come up with a real solution. And then people don't have to put their jobs on the line. They don't have to keep coming down here and protesting if we get together as a community. And that's all I'm asking. If our leaders could get something together where the community members can come together and strategize on what are we exactly looking for? I didn't come up here to say this, but I did. And if, while I'm here, if we can re-implement prayer back into our city, because our city needs prayer. We have a bunch of churches on every corner, but yet our neighborhoods are in shambles. So my thing is, where is our faith? Where really is our faith? Because we can't keep coming up here and putting our faith in the city. The city ain't gonna do it.
Thank you, Ms. Weems Anderson.
We gotta do it ourselves.
Thank you, ma'am. This time, I'd like to invite Sharon McLaughlin to the podium.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everybody's all well. I'm just coming to speak to you guys about the request for an appeal for the planning board's decision about the, to deny the Maple Creek subdivision preliminary, preliminary residential cluster development plat on Bethlehem Road. It's been denied by the planning board, but it was, they're appealing to you guys about it. I'm asking that you guys side with the developmental services staff who recommended that city council refer the subdivision back to the planning board for further consideration. I think the concern for the appeal was that the planning board did not give you all enough information as to why they made the decision, but I think part of the decision was made because of the community input. And so we're asking that you refer it back to the planning board so the community can continue to share their input, and then when we come, when they come before you guys, give us the opportunity to share our, our input to you guys, too. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to invite Adrian Copeland to the podium.
Hey there, I just, I was kind of surprised I thought some, certain things might get added back to the agenda or requested to get added back to the agenda. But, you know, I'm, I just want to say you guys are doing a great job. You guys are getting hit from all directions and really getting hit right in the heart with a lot of these pleas, you know, for some sanitation worker increases. And I just want to say, you know, it's right here in the Rocky Mountain City Council Vision Statement. It says its citizens enjoy and value the benefits of efficient, cost-effective, and responsive public services. And that's what y'all did when you gave them those raises. And they got, they got a fair shake, you know? And maybe we all defined fair differently, but there's a lot of chatter going on, there's a lot of protests outside, and it's hard to ignore a temper tantrum, and you guys are doing a really, really good job. Just want to say, keep it up.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I'd like to invite Robert Michaud to the podium. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did. Yes, you did, thank you. I'm kind of following up with Sharon McLaughlin's discussion about Mapleton Creek. We're hoping it goes back to the planning board, and if the developer wants to actually get a reason for it, we have a lot of reasons. And it's for the development of our area and our properties, which is taxes for you, for us all. And we just want it to be, you know, a nice place. Zoning is a very important thing, because there's a lot of, a lot of things in the zoning that you can get. And we want to make sure that we're on board with it and that you are on board with it. And that's what we're concerned about mainly, and then that's all I have to say. And thank you for having us.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Nehemiah Smith to the podium.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What is injustice? Injustice is not merely a word, it is a stain on the fabric of our society, a stain that we must collectively strive to eradicate. Justice, at its core, is the denial of fairness, equality, and basic human rights. It wears many faces, from systemic discrimination to unequal access to opportunities. It manifests in the subtle biases that permeate our daily lives and the glaring inequalities that persist in our institutions. However, we must be careful with the term. Labeling something as injustice requires careful consideration because the term carries significant moral and societal implications. Misusing the term may dilute its gravity, leading to a desensitization to true injustices. Precision in language is essential to foster meaningful conversations that, and enact positive change, ensuring that our collective efforts are directed toward addressing genuine injustices rather than inadvertently undermining the severity of the term. Locally, we see injustice in the handling of our school systems. That's injustice. The number of abandoned and dilapidated homes, and yet the homeless shelters are full. That's injustice. A man dies when he refuses to stand up for what is right. A man dies when he refuses to stand up for justice. A man dies when he refuses to take a stand for that which is true. Martin Luther King, Jr., that's injustice. But when we look at what is happening here, I heard some things that were said a few minutes ago that, you know, you would, you would think that the city does not, and when I'm wrong, somebody tell me, the city does not give a minimum of 10 days paid vacation, 96 hours of paid sick leave, nine to 11 paid holidays, ethnic consumer-driven plan, city-paid life insurance, optional employee-paid health and life coverage, medical and department care, dependent care, reimbursement accounts, 401K with a 3% employer-paid contribution to tuition reimbursement benefits, college education, and language incentive pay. Does the city do that for all employees? Then tell me where the injustice is. I'm looking for it. 51 of the, of the, of, of these firefighters didn't get paid. They didn't get a raise, 51 of them. Some police officers didn't get a raise. And we're talking about injustice? Say what now? We're talking about how much CO, CEOs make? Well, what about neurosurgeons? How much do they make? How much do they make? Is that unfair? And we are talking about injustice? People don't understand percentages? 15% across the board? Are you kidding me? So if a person is making $20,000 and a person making $15,000, the 15% are different?
Thank you. This time, we'll move back to item number seven.
I have a comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll recognize you, Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate everyone who came down and continue to come to voice their opinion. People might be tired. But we are tired of not being treated equally and fairly. I was here for the utility injustice when we were told on the city council that utilities were too complicated to understand and that we were not qualified to sit on awards that discussed complex matters. Information was withheld from us, so we had to educate ourselves. I was here when I was told directly by the leaders in the city that housing was not an issue that cities dealt with. I was here when some of us I was here when some of us had a vision for a robust downtown and a need to see a commitment to invest in downtown Edchcombe. And I saw this chamber full of people who supported and opposed all three of these issues. I saw unwavering support for positions. The difference is, on this city council, when we had hard issues to address and deal with, we didn't run. We debated, we shared the information, we discussed. Everybody had the same information. We deliberated, we took action. Was everyone happy with the action? Not always. But we never stopped the deliberation. Mr. Mayor, I call for continued conversation at the committee level for all the information that has been requested related to compensation, not just for the sanitation workers, but for all city workers. We had questions which were asked related to the study. We had questions about positions, new positions, which have still not been answered. And we had deliberation. I can say that I've had thoughtful conversation with the manager. We don't agree, but that's all right. We had conversation. And to me, we will not move forward because people are not going to go away because some folks are tired of hearing it. They're not going away. You might find yourself trying to suppress momentum and end up creating a volcano. So what I would say to this council, take the motion off the table that tabled it and let's have conversation and dialogue. We listened to the event center for years and we opened up and we went out and had community meetings for years and we came with a product that's working now. So that's what I call for, Mr. Mayor. I'll let you deliberate with your leaders, but I'm saying, let's have the conversation because the action's not going away.
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell. Did you get to be recognized?
I was waiting for you to recognize.
Councilman Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amos five and four, but let judgment run down like waters and righteousness as a mighty stream. No justice, no peace. So if you're looking for peace or you're looking for justice, we need peace and vice versa. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Manager Keith Rogers for continuing the effort as Rochelle Small Tony and paying very good wages, six figures, to black and brown employees and women, which when I came in 2003 was not present in that market or receiving those type of wages. But the struggles continue. We don't look at a comp pay study when we decide on what, when the manager decides on what to pay his upper management. But we consider that for the least of those, for those who are our regular workers. So the struggle continues. And again, publicly, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Keith Rogers, for continuing to hire your upper management with six figures salaries. And I'm glad to see it, if they earn it and continue to earn it. But the struggle continues and I'd like to see that same effort across the board with our employees. The same efforts when we move into discussion somewhere in the near future, if not tonight, on economic development, on how much money we're going to spend. I'd like to see that same effort and energy in all of our employees, no matter what ethnicity you are or gender, but just make sure that they are paid fair wages. And again, I thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Does anyone else wish to be recognized? Seeing none, hearing none, I'm going to have to step back to item seven. My apologies for skipping that. It's a proclamation in the city of Rocky Mount recognizing the Toastmasters. So I'll read the proclamation here. Whereas the city of Rocky Mount Toastmaster Club number 8957 was started on December 1st in 1998 in the city of Rocky Mount, North Carolina, and will be celebrating the 25th club anniversary this year. Whereas Toastmasters International is a non, a not-for, nonprofit educational organization designed to help members develop public speaking and leadership skills through a global network of clubs. And whereas the Rocky Mount Toastmasters Club is part of a worldwide network boasting nearly 270,000 members in over 148 countries. And whereas, uh, members of the Rocky Mount Toastmasters Club strive to advance the Toastmasters' core values of integrity, respect, service, and excellence. And whereas with positively support and access to international member network, the Rocky Mount Toastmasters Club has made a community-wide impact by producing confident members, dynamic communicators, and skilled leaders. Now therefore, I as the mayor of the city of Rocky Mount do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2023, as Rocky Mount Toastmasters Day in the city of Rocky Mount for the contributions they have made to the community in the areas of communication, personal growth, and professional developments. Now in witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand and seal the city of Rocky Mount this day, the 1st of December of 2023. Okay, that brings us to item number nine on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. So, let's see. So this time I'm looking for a motion to adopt the ordinances and resolutions to approve the tax releases, to approve the agreements and authorize the mayor, city clerk, and/or finance director to execute same on behalf of the city, adopt resolution authorizing an upset bid process, authorize the city clerk to advertise the offer for upset bids pursuant to general statute 160A-269, and if no qualifying, uh, unqual, no qualifying upset bid received, authorize appropriate city officials to execute purchase agreement and cancel the city council meeting scheduled for December 25th of 2023. Is there a motion? Banned by Councilman Joyner, seconded by, uh, was that Councilman Harris? Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Consent agenda passes. That brings us to item number 10, which is consideration of appeal to the planning board decision, Maple Creek major subdivision preliminary plat residential cluster development. Staff, city manager recommend that we refer the appeal back to the planning board, but I've been advised by our council that if a representative is here from the developer, they should come forward and speak.
Leon Parker on behalf of Red Oak Farms Development, which is the developer for the project. While the developer would obviously like to see y'all approve the plan as is, the developer's fine with remanding it back to the planning board. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer those for you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Parker?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, what areas were not addressed appropriately to the planning board the first go around that caused them to not want to support you?
To be honest, if you read through the meeting minutes of the planning board meeting, the, the developer is trying to do a cluster development. And in this particular property, that's something they can do by right. There are four areas that the planning board has discretion in that they can exercise their discretion over. And while there was a little discussion that kind of touched on some of that, the bulk of the discussion was on other areas that's not within something that's within their discretion. It seemed like they wanted answers to questions that were not within those parameters. And if you read back through the, the meeting minutes, that's just what it, what it seems to be. They didn't provide any rationale for why they voted against, so it's kind of hard to tell exactly what, what they were thinking in, in denying that.
So are you clear about why the community is opposed to your development?
Um, the, the community, yes. I mean, we've had, uh, this, this originally started out as a rezoning application to an R6 multifamily, um, beginning of the year. The developer went through the community meeting, a lot of concerns at that time stemmed around, the plan was to develop multifamily, uh, develop townhouses on the property. There was a lot of opposition to that, there were some other concerns. There's concerns about the density, uh, but you've got Beth Edenrod across the street, which is R6, and that's originally was on as R6 multifamily as well. You've got a, another parcel that's across the street, I believe, that's about 50 acres that was recently rezoned to R6. And so you've got, I mean, the area is clearly a residential area that's growing denser and the R6 is a, you know, a size that meets the local area there. So there's concerns about just the growth that's going on in that part of the community. There's also concerns about the flooding issues that some of the, especially on Pamela Lane, that some of the existing residents are having. The, the problem with that is, that's, the issues that they've been having since Hurricane Floyd aren't going away and it doesn't impact what's going on on this, on the property that the developer's working on because the developer's not building it in flood zone. So those seem to be issues that were brought up. Uh, there's also concerns over losing the natural area and what the developer did with the original rezoning application is after going to the planning board and continuing to hear some of those concerns, they, they pulled the application for rezoning, so that never came to the council. Went back to the drawing board, figured out how to do this as single-family homes, uh, and then tried to take into account some of the concerns and things that were mentioned. And we believe this current plan does that. For example, we're leaving with the cluster, you're reserving a portion of the property where you can't build on it or develop it. So the goal is to take the back end of the property, which is primarily where your trees are, leave the natural areas there, which is something that the community has expressed a desire to see, they want to continue to see wildlife, makes it useful for the community and also makes it useful for the residents, uh, that will be in the subdivision.
So you have taken into account the criticisms or concerns?
We believe so, yes, sir.
So, so the community has not seen what you have?
The community has seen what's there now as of the last planning board meeting and the last, uh, community meeting. I, I think they still have concerns with, with the development being there.
Okay, I'll let the planning department deal with that process, but I just wanted to get that information cleared up.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I was going, um, my understanding that, that, um, the, the citizens in the area, the neighbors are not opposed to, um, the land being developed is the amount of condos or homes that you're, that you're going to put in there. And again, you just mentioned about the flooding, uh, how you're saving the natural area. But I would like to hear, uh, from those that spoke during the public comment in reference to what you just stated to us. Are they allowed to come back?
Well, it's my understanding that it's not a public hearing, but all, which is why I allow them to speak during the public, uh, public comment period. Otherwise, I would have held them back.
But it still seemed like what we just heard from you, it doesn't completely addresses everything that, uh, they are concerned about. And if it goes back to the planning board, they have an opportunity, so you all can iron that out.
Yeah, that, certainly, at the planning board, there's an opportunity to, to hear that information. Uh, there are a few things from the last meeting that I've talked about with the developer that they're looking at, trying to make a few minor changes on a few things to address, some other potential issues in there. But, but I think that the developer's made a good faith effort to really try and, you know, even from pulling the original rezoning application, uh, to now moving to the cluster and just doing single-family homes. That's, that's a big change for the developer.
And will you all meet with the community again before going to the, back to the planning board?
I, I doubt it because I don't know when, I think the next planning board meeting is, I'm not sure when that is for the city. Somewhere in early December.
I'll see in the staff room.
December 12th.
December 12th.
December 12th.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Harris.
This property is in Ward 6. There was considerable opposition at the previous public, uh, planning board meeting. There's a question now about whether or not the developer is going to have a homeowners' association, the matter of the back area, the number of acres that's in the flood plain. We don't know how the water runoff, there's a lot of questions. And I make a motion that we take the recommendation of the city manager and we put this back to the planning board.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to second. Is there need for additional discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Daultrich.
To, to expand on what Councilman Harrison, um, Blackwell, and Knight were talking about, I think it would be incumbent, I, I would like to hear from our staff at some point, not necessarily tonight, but I think one of the concerns from the planning department from when I read the minutes is regarding the, um, the calculation of using the entire, I think it was 20 some odd acres, 22 I could be off, um, for the, um, number of homes that can be built in the cluster. And I think there's a, some might call it a loophole, but, and, and, but I, I think we as a, a city need to address that and look into, if there's flood, flood property or, or flood within the zoning, should that be used as the calculation for all of the, um, the number of homes that can be built or condos or whatever it may be, or lots, let's just say. And I think, um, we should do that. And I think we should do that sooner than later because we have a horrible history in Rocky Mount with flooding, and we need to make sure that we're on top of that. And I think it's a legitimate concern and something we should look into. So, Mr. Manager, I don't know how we go about that, but I, I would like to have that looked into further, please.
Okay. Yes, sir, Councilman Joyner.
Yes, I think there was a traffic concern as well in that area, that there were concern about the traffic. And there is a lot of congestion there now. And if you increase that, you're going to have a lot more. So if we could look at that traffic study as well.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. No more discussion. Is there, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The item matter has been referred back to the planning board, not to come back to us, I suppose. So at that point, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for economic development, motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Daltch. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session.